Are we on? I'd like to call this school board meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832. This is a regular meeting on Thursday, August 24th, 7:00 PM of Independent School District 832, the Moda Meet High School District. Please join me for the budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united states, and to the
Thank you. Roll call of attendance, please.
Done.
Approval of the agenda, do have a motion. Moved by Director Regan.
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
Moved.
Moved by Director Donna.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Presentations or recognition?
We don't have any presentations. The next thing we have is the superintendent's report.
Okay. And that's you.
And I'll talk about it in a little bit, but it's hard to miss right away. I'll show you some things that are happening around the district. Also give you some communications updates. Talk to you a little bit about the e-learning survey that you had asked for us to survey our parents, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that. And then also back to school information. You can see right away, we have two of our new staff members there. We had our new teacher orientation this week. And thank you to those of you who were able to come and say hello. Know they appreciated it. So around the district, our instructional leadership team, which are, we have teacher leaders from across grade levels and content areas from every building, come together every year to meet and examine data, look at the strategic plan, review past goals, and establish building-wide goals and action plans. So you can see, we had a very large crowd of teachers here working through that. And then here we go, a nice picture of our new teachers. You can see that we have a nice crowd, very enthusiastic crowd of new teachers here. Virginia, we're very fortunate this year. Virginia Mancy, Jim Lane, and Chris Carlson are serving as mentor and induction teacher leader team. So they were here leading our, our new staff and doing a great job just representing our teachers well and giving them a few, a few tips and tricks, and also introducing them to the strategic plan and our district. And we also had, for all of these new teachers, we also had mentors come in and meet with them as well and spend some time with them this week. Well, would you take a look at that? New scoreboard. The new scoreboard has been installed. You've seen, I know I've shown you already the new turf. If you haven't been out there, you should definitely take a look. And the, the roof, middle school roof is complete. And BEC Wildwood and OHA will be completed in the next week or so. And high school will be finished by, in September. So definitely ahead of schedule, so that's pretty exciting. At one point, we were going to put off Wildwood, to finish Wildwood next year, but they got ahead of schedule, so we'll be able to finish that as well. Every summer, we continue to be, engage our students and our, our buildings are busy. We had 2,200 registrations for summer programming, 159 different course offerings for students and adults. So even though for some of you, you feel like, you know, if things are just getting started, they've been going all summer long for us here in the district. And now we've got our student volunteers have been out and helping our staff set up rooms, helping their peers be able to transition next week. As new students come into the buildings, we have web leaders and link crew ready to meet those new students and help them with the transition. So that web, web leader training and link crew training has been going on this week. I know NHS and Link Crew and SLC are out in the buildings helping staff already. So a lot of energy and it's fun to see the students back again. Have you downloaded your app yet?
Yes.
So take, take a look, 900 downloads of the app have already happened on the Apple Store as of August 24th. So if you haven't gotten a chance to take a look at our new website and our new branding that's happening on that website, it's pretty amazing. And I think we should all look and maybe clap a little bit for Alice Soifert and all her hard work. So she's had, she's spent a ton of time this summer putting this together for us. And we should be very excited and proud about how, how we're representing our district on our website. It's, it's pretty, it's very impressive, very easy to navigate, easy to read, and good information. That app is going to be really handy for families. And the strategic plan is now available on our website. So based on your feedback to that document, those updates were made. And now that, that document is now on the, the website as well. And there's a link there. You had asked us to survey our families to find out more about their experience with e-learning. So the survey is out there right now, and it will be closing on the 28th at 5:00 PM on Monday. The purpose of, of it closing is so that we can gather that data and then talk to you about it on September, at our next study session and give you that information so that you can talk, talk through what it is you might want to change about e-learning going forward. So know that that is happening. So if you haven't seen it, make sure you check that out because we would like everyone's feedback. And then just some back to school information. You'll notice the color coding here with Wildwood being red, OH being green. That's by design. That's one of the things as part of our new way of helping families, you know, keep track of all their information is that Wildwood, Wildwood announcements will have a, a red stripe so that you can kind of see which building it is. That's another clue as to which building it is that you're getting here. Anyway, back to school, we are starting back up, grade six through 12 on the 5th and K through five on the 7th because of the assessment days that happened those first couple of days for elementary. And with that, that's my update. You have any questions?
Ellie? I have a comment that I really appreciated the e-learning survey. Actually, at first I thought I got it multiple times by mistake, but because I have multiple kids in the district, it was broken down by grade band or by our buildings. And so I appreciated it that way, even though I have to go back and fill out another one for another kid. But because then that gives us the data that we probably would want to look at by building. So I thought that was really great. So at first I thought it was a mistake, but it was just my mistake.
Okay. I have a question actually. What is the thought process between, behind elementary kids having assessment days to start the year versus the other grades?
Um, so our, oh gosh, I wish I had, Jen, I'm, can you think you can do a little bit of this on the fly? I'll get started as you walk up, but maybe you can help me. So this was a decision we made quite some time ago and, and it is related. There are a number of individual assessments that our elementary teachers do that are one-on-one assessments. And we used to have it where we'd take that first couple of weeks, first few weeks of school, and teachers would get substitutes to come in. We'd have volunteers coming in to help the teacher get through that one-on-one assessment. And so by doing this at the first two, those first two days, it allows each teacher to meet the student that's new to their class, do those assessments, and then have that data to start the year. It had, and so anything to add? Well, I'm, I'm really, I'm glad, thanks for being here. On the board when we made this decision to do this. And a lot of it had to do with also, when the teachers were doing it without those days, it was months, you know, a good month and a half maybe before students were getting personalized instruction for their academic level. So, and now with the Read Act passage, it's super important because we're set up to do that already. Those screeners that we're required to do by statute now, we have a time and space for that. We can get them done and our kids can start academic instruction with additional probably six weeks of time, which makes a difference in their growth.
I will say, other districts do it differently. That was one thing we looked at. So sometimes they will do it instead of that back to school night, or they'll do it before school starts. So that's why if you look at other districts, they still start at the same time, but they, they do make time for those assessments.
Makes sense. I was just kind of curious, does it impact like learning days for the kids?
Well, it officially, well, yes, okay. So there are two answers to that. One, those don't count as instructional days for the state. So when we talk about the number of instructional days by, that we have to have by statute, those don't count. But when you talk about learning days, I will, to Lucy's point, it does, by having those assessments before school starts, it does allow for teachers to make better decisions right off the bat instead of later into the, the year.
And I'm remembering correctly, the instruction days required for elementary are slightly less than, okay?
Which is why we're having, we're having that conversation about changing potentially. You wanted to talk about e-learning days because we can use e-learning days as instructional days for the state, but we cannot use snow days. But we have more room within the elementary schedule than we do with the secondary. Secondary, we're down to the wire with number of instructional days. We don't have room there. Okay, well, thanks for coming up.
And actually, you're, yeah, yes, you are.
Almost, almost.
Okay. We'll be quick. The next is the board member calendar. Does anyone have anything to call out? Lucy or Doc?
I wanted to call out on September 12th at 6:00 PM, MSBA does an advocacy tour. And so for new board members, this is the time where the government relations team meets with us. This is the metro area time, and they talk through the legislative session, the impact, those kinds of things. If you cannot make the 12th, there is another session on the 16th at 9:00 in the morning, open to anyone in the state. And they like to do them regionally because sometimes some of the things get very nuanced to regions. And that way the conversation is, is focused on the metro if you go on the 12th. So if you can't make the 12th or the 16th, you can look on their website and there are other dates where it's, their focus conversation will be regional, but you'd be able to listen and get the basics. In addition to that, you'll notice on the 19th of September, coffee and conversations restarts. And again, that's an MSBA informal time. So if you have something you're wondering about, like, how do you do your assessment days? We do them this way. Board members come together for that casual conversation with those curiosities and wonderings and, you know, camaraderie and, and things like that. And so if you can join those, those are restarting certain.
Okay. Now we are ready for you, Dr. Reck.
Which allows us to figure out where do we need to look next in order to bring cognitive to that data. We always take an opportunity to think about what we celebrate and where we spend most of our time is really, where do we need to focus during intervention? It's important for us to celebrate. And equally, and sometimes more important, it helps laying out that plan of what are we going to do next? In that, where do we need to focus? We do make sure that we are articulating what we want. We are putting specific data. And what are you doing, what are the observable outcomes that we're looking for? So that final question is, what are our, what are our actual plans? And how are we going to measure that we've done global contribution outcomes? And what are we looking for from educator action?
Jen, can you remind me, who's we? Who reviews the data?
So in Barb's update, she talked about the ILT and that. So we do this as a leadership team. I work with principals and PLCs. Our ILT students, so each of our schools have somewhere between eight and 12 people that they bring together. And then I know that, I believe we've talked about in the past that at our schools, particularly Wildwood, OH and the middle school, we have data days. And so their teams do the same sort of protocol. And because of the alignment that I'm trying to bring in our different processes, our teacher PLCs use a very similar process of what we've noticed, what do we wonder about their classroom or content level data? So we're all talking the same language. So it's a lot of different needs.
ILT stands for instructional leadership team. Every building has one.
When we think about intervention, the first part of this presentation. An intervention is instructional strategy program or teaching staff. That's just always to look at, this is a couple of students, including, this is very young students. The triangle on the left is something that can be called with multi-tiered support. So that tier two is what we're talking about, the third and fourth. I will do the tier one with the instruction that all these students have to get. Tier two is for those students that says, they need a little bit more than what he provides for all students. We use a student data program to help them to get up. He needs that extra level of support. Tier three is typically our special education student, both to a practice, like, but we're not over about tier one right now. Tonight, when we talk about intervention, we talk about the business. It's, I think it provides intervention, so that's how the area work focuses. The work of our interventionist and our impact. Yeah. That's a great question. That I would say is a tier two support, but it may not be a separate phase for instruction. What we are is not what we're providing to all of the students. So the purpose for this particular slide is to let you know that each of our schools have a little book where that helps them determine, gives students need what intervention. So we are looking at the data, we're answering these questions, and we're funneling through different questions that help us nail our focus. Our purpose tonight is not really to dig into what is this process. It helps to know that each of our schools have their individual process depending on the resources and programs that they offer in their school. So this past year, the 23rd year, we serve this many children in our intervention program that runs here, guarding through grade eight. It's 276 students participating, 205 participating in our intervention and 162 participating in our social model.
What, Jen, what does that data look like if we, if you charted it over five years?
That's a great question, but I'll get back to you on it.
Okay.
So the purpose of this visual image is really to give you a peek behind the curtain of what our, and intervention is active. So this is real data for a child in our system. What you see here is across the bottom, a whole bunch of dates. Those dates are the dates that we gather progress monitoring data. So in intervention, we gather a lot of street level data that helps us make it really effectively and timely. That first black line to the left says, this is the first intervention that we tried in the September. And that solid blue line says, when we collected our data, that trend is that we were not seeing the improvement that we anticipated we would try. And so on 11/14, we changed our intervention. We saw another flat line for a few weeks, but we changed the intervention. Another flat line, and so finally that last, or last black line is reciprocal teaching. We saw that blue line change and move it upwards. And so we knew that this is the right fit intervention because we were seeing the growth that we. So our intervention is, we're doing this work on a daily basis to help inform. Most children do not need for intervention to figure out what's the right fit. Most children, we know the sweet spot within 102, but we grabbed an example of a child to be, to be, to take this money to figure out what's going to make that improvement go in the way that we want it to.
Um, I have a question about, and I think you've talked to us about this, but can you elaborate a little bit, probably just for me? What triggers an intervention?
So we go back to this, that process. Each of our schools have a child study team, which is made up of our intervention teachers, our administration, and some of our school support staff, like our, our school supervisor or site or someone like that in that particular role. A teacher may say, I'm having some concerns with this child in my classroom, and I see that they're just not keeping up with what is very level instruction. So that team will go through these questions. And at some point, it will probably indicate, we need to dig a little bit further. And so they might do an inquiry that not all children have, need the opportunity to do in order to figure out what might be happening. And then that will shoot it into a particular intervention. In most cases, we know in the fall, who's going to be in those interventions? It's on the data from the spring. But we are doing this with every child, every year. And then as we are, you know, encountering the learning that happens, we might invite new children to participate in this. Is there any relationship between the place to go to Wildwood preschool and then jump right into the kindergarten, see their behavior and their academic? Follow them from?
Wildwood preschool to kindergarten?
That's a great question that I'm going to need to follow up on. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. You're right.
Every time you say that, I'm proud.
Kelly, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. I, I guess my, the only follow-up I would have to that is, so if a student is identified, they're working with an interventionist. And then, I know graduate is the wrong word, but a student can sort of exit out. And then another assessment could take place and that student could end up back with intervention. Or that's really fluid throughout the year, I guess, was my question or comment, right?
Typically, when we see, when we're looking at whether or not to exit a student, we look for multiple data points at or above what we're, what that proficiency level is. So there isn't debate at one time, you're out. We want to seek consistency. And then we typically do have a higher level of watch on those children that we exit from intervention. Back up without having to go through a, a significant time and intensive process.
With the past few years being so difficult because of COVID, how have you dealt with the additional students who fall into that category? Who maybe typically wouldn't?
Yeah. So that's another great question. I think what we have been doing is really expecting more of our classroom teachers in a way that they get them. We couldn't expect a year after we had our hybrid at-home year that our classroom teachers completely left off. It's great, able to establish a great group. There's a concerted effort to figure out what are the skills from fifth grade that maybe didn't get kicked as far as in that grade? And those conversations happen in order to keep them in support. We have seen an increase, I believe we see increased the number of children that our classroom teachers would like to see in intervention because there are always more, hey, can you take this kid? Because we want, you know, our interventionists have a lot of deep skills to work with students. And it's a part of our process is really to brighten size those groups so that we can exit kids and then pull in the next group. So we're, we're, we're starting at this level and we have, we have multiple. So we're, we're, we're starting at this level and we have the multiple levels of intervention. Typically, when we add children into intervention, they are scoring higher than the kids we're trying to be. We're always looking at who is the goal as soon as the highest need of intervention and then have to even. We're adding more.
May I also just add, we did add staff to help with this as well. And I can think of an example of a student who needed extra support and our. A reading specialist taught a paraprofessional how to do a specific strategy with the student to provide that support. So there were some creative ways of of adding both staff and then training staff. We had to do certain interventions as well. Would that be a good way to?
So we take and apply. Intervention. This is what you would say. So it depends on the school that you're in. Wildwood has adopted. Walk, the university model, and so they have. There's a week left to the. So in that given time that children have to. At O H, they also feature that given very many times. Um, and. Grade level. They have a team. That allows to determine. Middle school.
That was a question I was going to ask is will this new schedule help with additional intervention?
It will not completely eliminate the need to pull children out of some of those opportunities. There are some kids who need both of these interventions. And we just can't create a schedule that has happened. Need the communities and the schools. So there's a trade off, but there was definitely intentionality. Good, all right. So we're going to jump all the way to impact. And here's what I want to begin with. So before we look at any of the interventions, I'm going to talk a little bit about the time to intervention topic. For the purposes of tonight, I spent much more time on literacy. I have a very brief overview of math and then I come back to children. And the purpose or the way that I organized didn't want to come. We know that we've had a significant focus on our literacy work and so I wanted to follow up with giving you. And as a school or in a community, we have lots of. And so it felt appropriate to give additional context and information that may be helpful for our community to understand. As it's true, social emotional learning intervention. So we offer a lot of literacy events, interventions. These are just a few of what we offer K to eight. And you can see that it begins with those basics that are pre kindergarten children aren't working on. And runs through comprehension, really putting all those literacy skills together. These are not grade level specific interventions because we focus on what are the skills that children need to develop. Independent of their grade level and we go down through that. So when you think about the intervention.
Have been doing and continue to do, are they aligned with the science of reading as the read act is demanding us to do?
Yeah. Don't even have to go more than that.
Are these? Did you say these are? Used at every building? And and how do you? So I know we focused a lot on the Wildwood. Is this something that will be? Built out even further for our middle school students?
Here's how I would say that. We have focused with our better. So what all children have access to. Our intervention teachers have really been. Under the direction of Christina, who's well known as a rock star. She's been working with our intervention teams to really dig into what is the research about of intervention? And make sure that we have these really tight areas where the skills and data were seen from students. Like the research base that is to intervene for those kids. So we've been doing those interventions. Of our work, the resources that we have are aligned to science of reading now. Or we're trying to do our data source. So we don't have to trade off our intervention teachers today all over the. Significant science of reading.
So do you feel like though that? Our current middle school and maybe even ninth and 10th graders. Are we closing that gap on their literacy proficiency because? That's like, you know, maybe we are doing that, but are we seeing the results from the intervention?
So the purpose of the focus tonight is with our intervention programming. That is we are. I think your question is probably about that too. And are we moving the gap into one instruction? First, we may not have the significant gaps that we have in intervention. That's probably another presentation that I can come back and do to talk about how are we making a growth just across the board in our tier one instruction. I I didn't prepare that information.
You mentioned Christina, who you said we all knew is a rock star, but actually there are quite a few people here who do not know Christina Boyce, so.
Christina Boyce. Coordinator. Is however. Our state of the community. So and to give a significant asset. So here then, these are the types of interventions that we offer. Wanted to just share from math level data and then. And I didn't provide. For every intervention. From the kindergarten, we have a group of children. In the intervention. Data that we collect only for children. But we saw in the fall when we gathered our data, that under. By the spring.
I'm sorry, just to make sure I caught that correctly, thirty percent of the students who are in intervention. Okay.
Yep.
And.
We have. Different. And in the beginning, none of the children, we didn't have staff for that. For that year in the fall or actively using the. And you can see who they're working in.
Using that grade two example up there, what happens to the additional? Twenty three percent? That aren't meeting those expectations? Do they get moved to tier? Three intervention then, or how does that work?
So Rick's question, it's really dependent on the child, but typically if there is significant gap to make progress on. They're going to continue into third grade on that that accurately reading grade level text and practicing that. Until we can get them up to grade level and then move them on either exiting from intervention or moving them to the next intervention that will help them get to grade level. So there may be some children that we assess for special education. Typically, that happens though when we are seeing that flat line consistently. And intervention after intervention, like the one that I showed up front with the four different, four different interventions. When we don't see growth and we aren't making that progress and we did further, we gathered more data and that might be the special education.
Maybe you're getting to this, everything you refer to as K eight? Is that because high school intervention is a? Whole new animal?
Yes.
Okay.
So part of what we report on are things that we fund with different sources. We have really three sources of additional funding to help inform our intervention. We have ADSS, which is a sort of special ed funding whose goal is to intervene so that we can. Help kids before they need to be assessed for special education. We have Title One funding, which is all about helping kids who need that additional academic support, academic social emotional support. And then we have what's called early intervention services, which is a little bit more fluid. So instead of giving you an ADSS report or a title report, our district, and I love that I came into a system that did this. Really grouped everyone together and says, doesn't matter how we're funded, we're serving kids who need support. And so we're going to create a system that allows all of our kids to be supported. We choose in this district to use those funding sources K. There are very few schools who spend those resources into high school. Because we know that early intervention is helpful. And and I know that I've been here before and have talked about, we have work to do at our secondary and particularly our high school. And first, we need intervention and we're making strides there, but it won't be part of this because it's not sort of a formalized intervention program. At O H, we have a couple of charts for you. And you'll see that accurately reading grade level text went up from the fall to the winter. We saw just a little bit of an increase between winter and spring because they were pretty high in the winter. And then fourth grade is also accurately using grade level text. The difference is the complexity of the text between those grade levels. Maybe similar assessments, but we're increasing the level of text that we're asking.
So this is just for the kids in that middle tier. Do you do the same kind of test for the first tier and the third tier?
So the, the. The significant resources that we put into intervention, which call it smaller grades, more significant. We don't do that sort of intense data gathering. That's where we use our math data for our fast bridge data to measure progress over time. The classroom teacher is really in. And then we look. And a school by half of. Are we doing across the. So our small teams that we're.
Because as you're talking about it, I can't help but think, oh, I also wish I could see. The other tiers. I know you're focused on intervention, but if it's math or whatever the, whatever it is that's used. I think as a board, that's what we need to see at the next presentation is because. We need to have our heads wrapped around, how are we doing grade level by grade level and are our students? It, because this is really easy to follow and I'd like to see it for the entire student population.
Yep. When I did a teaching and writing newsletter, it was very. The intention is to be that.
Okay.
So the way it's presented. But I plan. Another one.
Yeah, I kind of have a similar question and that is with, let's just say, for example. When COVID happened in twenty twenty and we had students who were like a. Sixth, seventh grader, something like that. They're now tenth, eleventh graders, right, in the high school? And so this K eight sort of focused intervention, I wonder. How those tier ones are performing now that they're high school level? You know, I don't know, because maybe it's not as drilled down or as focused and I wonder who we're missing. And so it makes me question about a little bit about like that data of that tier one group that had a very, no fault of Matamede High Schools, it happened to the world. But very disruptive time period that we're not really focusing as much on learning to read like our littles. But they're really focusing on like how to use what they've learned to read. And I I'm curious about. What that data looks like now with that group. So I'm not expecting anything today. That's something that I just, I would hate for us just to wonder how it's going, but to rather know how it's going for those kids.
Yep. And I think at the high school level, because when we look at the way that we gather data. The reason that we choose to have that great. That are elementary. If that math data is a little bit. On a higher level. And so fast bridge, while it is an excellent resource for us to figure out narrowing on our elementary children. Not quite as valid or valuable for our sixth to eighth, particularly for our children who are accelerated or who do very well in school. Our intervention teachers equal. So we have fast bridge data and N W K math data for there. At the high school level, it is pretty difficult to give. Or and so then. And then another example of. 读读的阅读 text. So if I were to take the science of reading and the volume of vast knowledge and switching into just a little bit. Typically, if children learn. It will develop over a pretty predictable path. In the past, we have parents. And doctors. Plan to be going, which is helping navigate. For instance. And then comprehension. In that. Where it starts with accuracy. Slow down. But it's building before we pass the. Don't want it. It is super bad. It's like one can. In order to. And then that comprehension is. And. So that's first supporter, which is why as we focus. Different skills. So here we saw the start of the intervention and then the end of the intervention. And then at the high school level, we move on to looking at the reading grade level packages. And this really speaks basically to what we were talking about. That when we look at the sixth and seventh graders who are in reading intervention, they will make sixty percent. they were made sixty percent were meeting or exceeding their growth goal, which means gap closing growth. Uh, an interesting tidbit about the N W B A math test is written to be at fifty percent. So in any given question across the grade level, the goal of that assessment is to. If the kids answer correctly and have answered incorrectly, because then we're knowing as they're answering questions right and wrong, it sort of narrows them in ten points where they, what, what their data suggests about their skill set. So we're figuring out what don't they know quite yet, what do they know? And that's how it levels kids up from a least sixty percent remaining or exceeding. That's a pretty significant number of kids who are growing in those skills.
I don't get that. Sixty percent means not a good number.
So help me understand why it's, I don't understand that perspective.
Yeah.
Or that comparison.
Statistically, if we're looking at an average, um, year of growth across the school, we want fifty percent of their growth goal. So we want that, but that would be the expectation within everything right. After kids meet that growth goal, which doesn't mean that they're not growing. We have specific targets of how much they're supposed to grow in a year. And the way that this assessment works is, is level to try and pinpoint where children are. It's unlike a standard test where we want everyone to meet proficiency. This one does its own sort of level. And that is the edge of my understanding of that particular assessment. Um, and what I can do is I can confer with Christina and perhaps put together a video that talks about, here's what N W B A math does when it gathers data.
At the one that if they answer it right, then it gets harder? Okay.
Yeah. And then when they answer it wrong, it's a little bit easier.
Okay.
Yep. That's a tricky one.
All right, I have it down though.
And I think that, that point of clarification will be really helpful for our community to understand better. So we'll put together something to think and that would be good. All right. So an important thing that I wanted to add that is not specific to intervention programming, but it's very. We recognize, and when I say we, I mean our school system, our intervention teachers, our classroom teachers and district leadership, that we have a gap related to word study. The word study is that age appropriate phonics, appropriate for students who are in. Not only building blocks of literacy, but in understanding, um, and what I say. And like our goal to per literacy, um, the word morphology, understanding how words come to a great part and, and understanding how they work. So we recognize that we need to do it. And part of that recognition, what we started to start with. Well, again, we followed up with a student, the model, the following, we started our package. Anything that we have to do all the time, we respect people that have two minutes of that. And as we gathered that preliminary data, um, we recognized that we needed to respond, not at any intervention level, but at the grade level or a schoolwide level. But we purchased some new resources for third, fourth and fifth that focused on including that word study. We added a new intervention related to word work or word study. And in that intervention, fifty seven percent of the students met or exceeded their growth on that little eight minute assessment. And that helped us know this is an assessment that we need to keep because it is beginning to fill that gap. So in that case, Paul, we don't want to see fifty seven percent. We want to see eighty, ninety percent who are meeting that gap. And again, this particular piece really does support that focus on children who are characters. All right. So this is my succinct slide for math because I'm focusing more on literacy and social emotional learning tonight. Um, on the left hand side, you see some of the types of interventions that we offer in the area of mathematics. And then some highlights. A while would saw significant improvement in number recognition and number sequencing. OHA saw success in accuracy and fluency of most rotation back in grade five in particular. And for two years in a row, um, nearly two thirds of the students who received math intervention met or exceeded their growth goal on math. So we thought sixty percent was good. Two thirds is even better, meeting that growth goal. So all of these things really mean we are seeing gap closing growth, not just sustaining where they are, but bringing them closer and closer to that. Any questions about that one math slide? All right. So, um, one of the reasons that I wanted to spend a little bit more time with our social emotional learning intervention is to bring clarity to the idea that our FCL, social emotional learning interventions, are programming that's focused on skills and strategies that impact academics. FCL is so individualized that the evidence that we gather isn't going to be math level data. We have to look at an individual student, which is why all of the data that we'll see is street level data. Some of the things on the side that our, um, school counselors, our social workers and our behavior specialists work with, our self honesty and asking for help, being on task and engaged in their academics, reading and responding to others, which is that community. Um, importance to being present, that we need directions, identifying coping with those emotions that may get in the way of them participating. In those academic areas, social skills, again, there's a lot of classes of learning that happens in school. So we need to know how to work effectively with our peers, organization and study skills and work completion. Those are, those are really the big topics that in FCL, we're working on. These are a couple of examples of how we track data, that's street level data for students. So on the left, we have real data for a child who had some disruptive behaviors. When we think of disruptive behaviors, it's actions that interrupt regular school or classroom activity. Um, and that really impacts both that individual child and it may impact the, the children who are in class with them. And so as we engage that child in the intervention, we saw a decrease in that disruptive behavior, which allowed them to participate more fully. And then, um, our behavior intervention folks also look at that academic tie. But I didn't, we, we didn't provide that parallel data here for you tonight. The graph on the right shows academic engagement. And so that is we are visually observing children in the classroom and watching whether they're actively or passive participating in classroom behavior for activities. And we track that across time. And our goal really is to take those, um, SCL groups, teach them some skills and then make sure that kids are able to generalize those skills when they're not in that small group environment. But when they're with their peers in that place where they need to take in academic information as well.
Oh, this will be poorly worded. Um, if you go back a slide, I see on the bullet points. Is discipline never an option with go to the next slide? With disruptive behavior that interrupts regular school learning? And I know you touched on and may others, but certainly the whole class is affected.
Of course. So ask me that question.
Okay. The bullet points is discipline not a tier two strategy for children with behavior interventions?
Good question. So when we think about that intervention, we're really looking at teaching and practice of the appropriate behaviors. And so when we think about discipline, think of things that is consequences that come after the fact of behavior. And so if we want kids to practice appropriate, then we have to have them practice something. Discipline would be, um, less about an intervention and more about an administrative response to student behavior. But here, our, um, our school counselors are not going to be the ones who are doing the administrative action of discipline. But they are going to pull kids into small groups and process through what are the skills that you need to have in order to not disrupt learning in this particular class and they practice that together. These are two snapshots from a program that we have called check in, check out, which really is an intervention that, um, where children have a point of contact as they begin their school day, a point of contact as they end their school day. And then during the course of the day, there's data being collected about those behaviors they've learned in that small group that we're trying to generalize in, um, the classroom. And so they will mark their level of, um, of proficiency, if you will, on each of those things. So the top one is really more about, um, their words and actions and, and starting and continuing work. And then the bottom one is a third grade, um, specific language staying in the green zone for learning. But these are ways that visually we can collect data with children so they can see how they're doing. And they begin their day processing, I'm going to have a great day today. And at the end of the day, it's an opportunity to reflect and talk about what are the great choices they made and what might they need to do differently the next day. So it's just another one of the ways that we collect data when we're doing, um, social emotional learning.
So I'm assuming here in the green zone, that's for zones of regulation, right? And so that is the proactive approach to behavior and identifying what keeps someone in that zone. What are the, how, how am I feeling? How am I handling the situation? Rather than getting to the oops, it's too late. Now I've done X and now I'm in the principal's office. Is that right?
Yep. And that's definitely our approach is to make sure that we do everything that we can to prevent those disruptive behaviors or the actions that we see when kids are showing with their behaviors. If something's not quite right, you have to begin or it begins and then, um, and that's part of the intervention. And then one final slide of data that we collect. Um, sometimes our focus on in social emotional learning is really about executive functioning skills and improving work completion skills. And so for this child in particular, we gathered data in each of their four core classes about appointment and where they complete or not complete based on the intervention that they were having.
Was this, again, this is just K through eight in that second tier?
Correct. This one is street level data. So it is one child in particular. It's just, uh, for you and for our community to understand, these are the ways that we gather data related to social emotional learning and intervention because it's used hard to provide math levels and nearly impossible to provide satellite level data when it comes to social emotional learning.
I think, again, looking at this, it makes me want more information about the other tier, especially tier one. When I look at this, what I keep thinking is, though, as Kelly described earlier, those middle school kids who went through COVID, they really, many of them are lacking in the executive functioning skills. And so I don't know if this is something we could apply to those older students, even if they're not in tier two. I, 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 you know, I want us to explore doing something like that because as I'm looking at this, I, I keep thinking that that's probably what we need or there needs to be something because, um, I know we have Zephyr time and there's some other things that we've tried to get at it, but there's not been a real tracking of students who, because of the experience they had the last few years are maybe on an, uh, in a similar situation to our tier two kids on some of these issues.
Were you using your data for that? I'm curious.
What data?
To understand how you're making that causation of COVID equals lack of function, executive function skills.
I didn't say it's a causation, but I think they missed many kids. I mean, everyone who went through middle school during COVID missed a lot of that, um, experience of middle school where that is practiced over and over. And, um, so I think that's just anecdotally, that's what we've been seeing is that our current eighth, ninth, tenth are struggling more.
When I think about middle schoolers, that's that time, yes, to learn that and, and they struggle. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. Are you saying our current kids need that? We need to track that into high school? I'm not following exactly what you're looking for.
I'm saying our current seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, that same ti- time period of kids who they, they weren't in a, a normal middle school experience. And I think there's, there's not been much tracking. I mean, I think, I mean, Barb and I have talked, I don't know if you want to jump in, Barb?
Yeah, I was just trying to think, I'm just trying to think about, um, so there are just a couple of things. One, um, when I think about what we're looking at here, we're looking at, um, this work, this is a work completion chart and we do have ways to check work completion at the high school. You know, there's a lot of data about work completion, um, just for us to pull out ourselves as parents. I wonder if, you know, one of the things that we can come back and talk about is we do have students where we do track, like who would be working with people, um, in our, in our high school around work completion and keeping data on work completion. So we have some things that we can come back and talk about. We, um, the other thing that I don't know, I was scrolling through, I don't know if you have it in here, is that we are, um, going to have two sections of study skill strategies next year at the high school. Having, we're going to be specifically, yeah, to specifically teach some of the skills that we're talking about that you were, uh, we're talking about as well. And that will be multiple grade levels kind of together, getting specific strategies to help support students. So we, we do have some of those things in place, but to your question, what I was trying to process a little bit is about tier one. Um, I think if you're talking about like all kids, we do have ways at the secondary level in general, to be able to see how students are doing work completion, which is different than at the elementary. We don't have that same system of being able to look up grades and homework and such. So, um, but we can think about ways that we can bring some more of that information back to you.
As a follow up, what I'm hearing Stacy and what I'm sort of a yes and for that is, I don't think we know what we know without the data behind it, right? Like, like, so, you know, the data behind it might say, wow, we're doing amazing. These are some great things, or it might really say there's, here's some growth areas for us. And either way, I think it's better to know. And if we have those growth areas, then that's what we focus on. But, um, that tier one group, to me, I keep going back to the whole presentation, the intervention piece sounds amazing. It sounds fantastic. That's not most of our kids. And I'm not saying that in a negative way. I'm saying that's where the large, largest percentage of our students. I'm not sure what that data tells us. So that, again, that's the part B of your presentation, but, uh, the, yeah, that, that's the part that I'm questioning myself as well. I keep going back to the, the intervention part sounds very solid. There's a lot of, you go this direction, there's somebody to catch you. You go this direction, there's someone to catch you. There's, I'm just wondering who's catching the tier ones.
A little bit to your point Stacy, wouldn't the, I mean, if we, you don't have this, this level of data or this type of data for the older kids in the high school. So, so is the satellite now, now the best measure of the answer? At this point?
Of map level data is better for just better informing our understanding. Satellite level data really, it gives us a fear of how generally words form. It's like, that's the purpose to diagnose how we respond. For that, we have to come down to that map level data that gives more specifics, actualized data. And then we go in and say, oh, we've got some problems and we have homework completion problems. And then we go down and say, oh, we've got some content problems and we have homework completion problems right now. Raising this particular area show that there's something going on and that's a process to create an active system.
I, I think I can answer some of this as well. Actually, so our high school staff regularly meets around grades and work completion. So we do have a group that watches that um regularly. And I'd say they've been hitting it hard, grades, they've been hitting hard um and more frequently, especially since COVID. Um that's, so I think, so we do have data that we can probably come back and talk to you about. I will say, I'm not completely sure we have good pre-COVID comparison data because this is something that during COVID, they got really good at tracking kids and making sure they understood where students were. And I'm not, I don't know what kind of data we have pre-COVID, but we could talk about what's happening now. I think we could do that for you. Right. And that's what I was trying to get at. I didn't understand the question because I'm not sure if it's COVID related or just who middle schoolers are and we're noticing it more now because of COVID.
Yeah, and I'm not asking to compare back to pre-COVID. I, I'm looking at this data and finding it very helpful and thinking, oh, I'd need something so I can see, to Kelly's point, that other very large group. Um but we had talked before about those current eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh and how, which is probably why there's a study skills class, how there was a huge need that, that hadn't really presented itself like it had, like it does now pre-COVID.
Yeah, I think it's a combination of yes, and I think we're getting better at, at getting those resources and getting people trained to be able to provide, provide that support. I don't know if Avid is part of one of these slides. I can't remember. There are so many slides in here. It's hard to remember what's coming, but um.
How many I know?
But I will say, your slides are very good because it's obviously hitting a tone because we're all like, oh, okay, now I, I'm understanding more about what I didn't understand before, and now I just want to know more. So that's, that's where this is going, I think.
That's, that's a good data presentation when you have more questions. Um, uh, so the, how many staff did we have attend that Avid training from, if you recall? Yeah, so we have a lot of staff that are engaged in how can we explicitly teach strategies for students to support them in the ways that we're talking about right now? Um, that's been a big emphasis and effort at our secondary level.
That need help with some coping skills? I always point to executive functioning skills as one.
I'm just gonna call. Doesn't hit on a lot.
All right. So that was, it was important for me to better understand that. I want to make sure as we are asked questions out in the community, I know that social in particular, I've been wanting to understand this. And I am hopeful that a part of this communication has clarified that they're on their heels. That's the one. Social media. And that's not going to be, we need to work out what's going to be called control. Right. Reorienting our COVID. So we took time to talk about tier two. Now we're shifting to tier one, but it is not going to be the level of information that we're looking for at this time. So that's tier one. And tonight, we're gonna talk about our MCA. These level data, in that standard, with one time per year, provides directions about how we need to. Tonight, we're only talking about.
Um, does gifted and talented fall under tier one or is that a, an offshoot of tier one?
I might suggest that we allow tier three. We are moving beyond what all children receive and providing additional support, but it's not intervention, it's enrichment.
Okay, thank you.
So um as a, just a bringing clarity um with regard to our Minnesota country assessment. We participate in these because they're state required assessments. We give the grade levels that they tell us we have to give. So in reading, we assess children in grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And then again, in grade ten, in math, we assess them to three, four. And again, in grade eleven, in science, we only assess them in grade five, eight, and four. And they don't tell us what grade, if they want to, to present MCA. They hear they study biology and in schools across the state. So my students are in biology in nine, someone in biology. And they want to make sure that that assessment, the right side gets to that particular corporate because of the simple.
And can you remind me, which grade do most of our students take biology here? Okay, thank you.
So um to understand an MCA score, each student earns a score from grade level. Oh, one, who got grade level ninety-nine, for Campbell, in third grade, the child with three oh one, gets a nine. Third graders will never earn a score more than ninety-nine. Nor will they ever earn scores below three oh one, all the their grade levels. Another way that those assessments are organized, um we have four levels that we say are achieving. The does not meet standards. And, and that's thirty-nine, always the end point, thirty-nine. Our he needs to always forty to forty. Meet standards, always meet that. But ends somewhere in the sixteen, and on the top. And where the distribution is. And whatever across the board is. And then exceed begins where that sixteen left off, they meet, and go into the next. And that indicates a difference. Sometimes there are no ninety-nine in grade levels. Different, like, or no, seven, ninety-six, that might be top score because they're on to ninety-seven. It's just one of those ways because in that state test, even a hundred is tested. It's not a one point right for each score that they receive. They use some data that. But they use some, some hardcore data behind the scenes to arrive at what numbers we will want. But I think it's helpful to know that thirty-nine and below, wherever that one begins, sometimes they're going to go one. It's always there. That partially leads to the enemy, are pretty consistent and then what that means is. And then according to the Minnesota assessment report interpretive guide for this year, um MDE states that MCA results can be used to look across student groups, schools, and districts to determine where they, their baby, underlying inequities in how they're conducting instructional practices. This really reiterates what I put as the definition for satellite data. It helps us in trends. It allows us to think about, um where does this point to some promising practices? And where does this point to where we have to dig further in order to uncover what will not? What questions do you have to me about MCA's in general? We use data, MCA data, to help us understand how we align our lessons to the state standards. How well we align our resources to help us to do our instruction. That's what MCA's do, is they help us look at how well we achieve standards. There's been a request for um an understanding of our trend comparative data. And so we are including how our students are performing relative to other districts. And it's important to note that when we compile that comparative data, we're looking at a couple of different sources. There is a report that comes from the Minnesota Department of Education called the North Star Report that's available. It's a secure report, so it's not public data, it gives student names in it. But it gives information about um how our, our students and our schools are doing across the state. And so we can see some of that comparison. Unfortunately, MDE has um continued to update how they um share the data. And so that North Star report is only available for the past two years. We have to look a different way to find that comparative data. If you go to the MDE school report card, engage, that public data is available to us. And so we have gone for the past number of years and looked at um comparative schools. So we look at schools, not only who these people are typically compared to, but also we look at what's up in the first five people in the demographic. And so while this is not an exhaustive list of who lives on our comparison list, we routinely look at Delano, Dina, Minnetonka, Warrenville, St. Michael, Albertville, Whiteletter, New Orleans, Tonda, as part of that comparative system group. Um what we won't see on this list are schools that have like a hundred students. Because what we see in their data, when they have a group of twenty children who are taking certain assessments, the difference between kids, teams, their percentages in biology, it's really hard to have consistent trends that help us really know how we're figuring.
I'm just gonna interrupt if it's okay. So the reason we put this part together is we heard from a couple of you that looking back over ten years would be really helpful. And so just to reiterate, when pulling this data together, I would just want you to know, we did take it from a couple of different sources so that we could go back ten years. And that spends, you know, that much time going back and finding these old files. We did have data from comparison districts that we could find from old um ILT meetings from before we both, when we both got here. And so that's where we got some of this data, but that data was based on our comparative districts. So I just want you to know that there's a little bit, a little bit of like us put, trying to put this together for you. I'd also want, I mentioned to you before that sometimes the number that is on the report card from MDE is slightly different than the da- the spreadsheet that we get, which is slightly different than what we thought we had in the first place. And it's just off by a little bit, and it's just because of how they sort the kids. So I, I feel like I need to put that upfront, is that we didn't, you know, we did our best to put ten years together for you based on um really using some old data, so. Okay. Right.
So it's like our, we did our best. So the first, all right, so I'm gonna um share with you the media graph, then I'm gonna go on. So this first graph, here, you can see the district. That's the end, the age, and the grade. MCA, um, we have standards. Off to the right, what we shared is where we care, um both the state level and the regional comparison. On what data we're able to use for our. And when I think about all of this, um statements, twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-two, doing, doing our comparative system, we never pull out that it might be for schools involved depending on.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, so in the twenty twenty, our students didn't take assessments because we were.
Right.
In twenty twenty-one, many of our schools were in a hybrid face-to-face and they did not put together accountability data because of the lack of. So when you go look at that, any school report card, they will show you twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, if they didn't create that here. It's a moment to digest. They want the math. Math. When you were fourteen, but it's far back. There were two different years that the new standard was in twenty fourteen, all students were on, were being.
So when you say it's grade three, three and eleven, that eighty-four pers- or let's go to twenty twenty-three, that seventy-one percent, that's an average of all of those grades. Do we have it broken down? What grade three, four, five? Okay. And when we say top five, that's in the state or compared to our, the ones that you listed?
So in twenty-two and twenty-three, that is approximately.
Okay.
Yes, we, that, that gave reports that we've been able to.
Okay, thank you.
This is likely with reading and math, that even though, because of the sample size, it's, it's likely that these will, would match with um the state as well as the samples, um as well as the comparison. We can't be certain, but it's likely. But again, when it's a really small district um of, you know, a hundred students, sometimes they can, they can fluctuate pretty. So we can't be sure that there wasn't a greater Minnesota district that was in and out. Um that's, that's the one thing. And that really was, is the problem with, we'll just say, when we talk about science, that's one of our reasons we really can't give you this. And this is, I just would want to reiterate, this is, you did request this, and so this is our best attempt to give you what you were looking for. And so I just, I want you to know that whenever I put out data, I'm always a little nervous if it's not exactly right. But we did pull it from a few different sources, so.
So I'll just say I spent most of the afternoon looking at the Minnesota report card today, knowing that came out. And um, you know, when, when I, when we look at, like, I couldn't find it by grade level. I could find it by the middle school or by OH, or maybe I was doing something wrong. Um but, so some of the things, when I looked at the numbers, at first I was like, eh, like, there are a few. like, there are a few moments like that, but then when I was like, let's look at some of our comparative districts like this. So then I started pulling data from like, on Orono, right? And so I saw so, I mean, it was literally like I was looking in a mirror of the same trends of what was happening, like it almost to the same percentage. It was like, and so then it made me question things like, like, uh, so I put down questions like, something must have changed, like in math. Between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, our numbers in Orinos were like mirrored. And so what's, besides COVID, there must be something I'm not understanding because it was exactly. So I put down the test change, what happened in twenty twenty-two? I don't know, it was like shocking. I would encourage everybody to look at that report card and compare some of our districts that we're compared to because um, I feel like probably all of these districts are asking the same thing. It was, so what do you know about that? Anything?
No.
Okay.
I think that's, that's a great question, and that's really when we think about that satellite level data. This sort of comparison helps us bring context to trends. Because you're right, Kelly, if we were to look at our score in isolation, we might have a reaction that um, is either uh, too big or too small comparatively. If we, independent of that comparison, we look at this data and know we're not where we want to be. And I think it's comforting sometimes to recognize that there is a trend across the state. And we need to do our due diligence to help our kids continue to grow in their achievement. And we're not alone, that, that disruption, Stacy, that you were talking about during COVID, definitely impacted our learning, and we're still making our way out of it. As we read some of the commentary that's coming up from the Department of Education as it relates to this data, there is a recognition that we are still in a process of learning recovery. We aren't as um, in crisis as we were immediately following COVID. And at the same time, we know that there's. I'm gonna jump to science, and like Barb talked about, this one is different. It's different because there are only three grade levels. The, um, the way that the state reports data, reading and math serve as a point of accountability. Those kick-in measures from MDE that put us on lists that may require additional support from the state. Science does not have that same level of um, investigation from the state. So they put out different reports. And so um, looking at that comparative data, we just didn't have a high level of confidence in sharing that comparative data as we did with. Because of the volume of information that the Department of Education has helped. So like Kelly did, one of the things that we did is try to share with you, while we don't have that comparison to our comparable districts, we can show you that trend for the state. We know that we're gonna outperform the state, and we should. We're, we are, um, we have different demographics than if we were to put all of the students from the state in a bucket together. And we see a similar change in how that data is coming out across the state. We have a, a pretty parallel line, it just happens to be a, a, you know, uh, significantly above the state. So, can't give you that.
Oh, this might be a question that you're gonna have to write down, but oh. So the state, the state's average in science went down two percent from two thousand twenty-two, we went down seven percent. Why?
So I can tell you that if you have dug in, unlike Stacy and I, but we have that. We do have that, and we can see where in the system, we saw some increases and we saw some decreases. And we have some ideas, but we have to do.
Well.
You know, where we want to be about that. There are a number of things that can influence. When we purchase new resources, for example, we typically see an improvement. When we have a change in practice, it might come from things that we might see a change in our setting. And so um, you do have some looking deeper. One of the things that I will say is that um, our elementary science, we know that we don't have that additional standard report at OH. We have a broad set standard report where we have that focus on science standards. Because it's great for math at OH. Or at the middle school, that's pretty, ten years. Only we have, we are on the evening heads, because we're. All that, the first year, they're. They're not as proven as they say that they are. And we've been rolling through to. So we will likely see some inconsistent data within our process. Because our instruction, particularly on the years, not going back to assessment, in eighth grade. Something that they've learned about in sixth grade. So we'll do our best to fill in gaps in that eighth grade years. I'm so thankful that we can be done on our science. It allows for better um, both in sequence for our children. If we had waited in the middle school, it's like, oh, years will think we'll. So science is just gonna be an anomaly for a bit.
Oh, could I just, I just wanna clarify one thing you said. So it's not that we'd be filling in gaps, it would be that we'd be reviewing.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, so um, because of the order that they're, typically they would be taking eighth grade earth science. And then, so that would be freshest for them, and they've taken it, they took it earlier. So they need, they'll want to review differently for it. Standards, because we're in this weird gap, right? We've got new standards, we adopted them early, which is good. Also, only thing about teacher licensure, because there's issues there, right? So all the right reasons, but unfortunately, this becomes very public, right? And so when, do you know when the science test will come out? Because then we'll see a dip two, a new test.
If I recall accurately, it's twenty-five, twenty-six.
And then twenty-seven is reading.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, currently the test is on earth science?
In eighth grade.
So these numbers do reflect when our kids had earth science in eighth grade.
Yep.
So it'll be next year. They will have had it in seventh grade or some, but I understand what you're saying. So it still doesn't solve the problem that, of why we went down so much, but then we have to be prepared that they could even have another problem. Okay.
Yeah. I, if I were to hazard an educational guess, it would, um, I would put myself out there and say, if implementation of these new science that really may change. And I think every district is a work in progress on how they're doing. I think the, the way that we're aligning instruction to the new standards, which are pretty well-written standards, is a better way to address science. So I like what we're doing. Next year in particular.
Jen, I wanna add to that, I mean, you can like what we're doing all you want, but it's also what's best for kids. Okay?
Yes, and that is why I like it, but thank you for, for bringing some research base in there and not just, I think it's fun.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
So um, I apologize if there's a slide that has this coming up next. Um, but like, if you were to back up a slide or two, since those are more comprehensive. Would, will you be able to show us the historical trend come to, compared to the state data? And compared to the comparable district data, so that we can understand what their trends are and how our trends relate to those?
So I don't have one, I think it's the only one where I put in state data, but I definitely can't go with our district data. But thank you. I think one of the things that we can organize is what's happening. And it's really important for us to share our source. And when we look at our comparable districts, we really try to make sure that we are as overt and transparent and helpful. So that's why we not said this district, this district, this district, although you can get that information. If you want a little tutorial to go to kind of navigate that, and you use our school report card. That data is only available.
Well, maybe it's, maybe I'm the one that's not following this, but I thought you intentionally pulled a group of districts together. And I assumed you averaged them out and then tracked that year over year to compare our reading, math and science against that. So, so we do have.
It's not averaging them out, it's a matter of taking the district level data um, and seeing where we fall. So actually, like, so twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, those we could actually look up and see based on the data file that we were in the top five in the state um, overall for our math. Um, district level data on the MCA. And so there are districts that come and go into those top five. Um, they, you know, just like we were in reading, we were in top five, sometimes in top ten, we come and go in there. Um, but it's not always the same district. But we did look at our, the districts that we compare to, to just try and, that, that is part of what we do.
Ryan, what I was doing was exactly what you're asking. And so on the Minnesota report card page, you can just type in the name of the school district that you're looking for, for the comparable. And you can see only back to twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three. And I believe, unless I was looking at it wrong, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, and then each one of those schools would be listed there. The school district, or then you can break it down by school as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely the direction that I'm hoping to go with this. I guess I'm not following them. What was the purpose of identifying those districts?
From the first slide, yeah. Why did we name?
Twenty nineteen, twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, there isn't a, it's why it's biased that I can do that. So I have to go to other avenues and do that one-by-one comparison of, these are the, the districts that look like us. And this is how everyone scored this year.
But, uh, but we're not seeing that, are we?
That's the, that's, I guess that was, that was our intention of telling you that that's where we rank.
The twenty sixteen through twenty nineteen is, that ranking is the number they compiled because it was not available. And then twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three was provided by the state. My, does that make sense, Ryan?
It doesn't. I just, I, I'm not seeing.
I, I'm, I'm with you. I, I was expecting to see, here's Bonita, here's Edina, here's West Tonka, here's Orono. And I understand it's not, we can't get all the data for all the years, but.
We can show you how to do that at the end of this meeting, I'll show you how to do it.
Okay, I just thought that that's, that's why you told us those schools were, okay, got it.
So the, the data somewhat meaningful, but it's not, until we compare it to trend lines across either the state or comparable districts. And I don't care how we get there, and I understand all the data may not be available. But what I personally wanna understand is like, how are we tracking? And maybe my follow-up question to this would help is that obviously around the fourteen, fifteen area is where, um, in all three areas, our proficiency scores peaked, right? Like in this case, eighty-five point three percent. And it's been a steady decline since then. So is that because, because we're still top five, which is fantastic? So that makes me think that the actual percentage score doesn't matter as much because it's going to be a different criteria every year. Or does the actual percentage score matter? And should we be concerned that we've gone from eighty-five point three percent proficient in twenty fifteen to seventy-one percent in twenty twenty-three?
Both. Assessment is assessed that MCA. So you do wanna look at both our percentages. That's how many children are on a gift list, that that's threshold for competence on the standard. Both our instruct, our instructional practice. System has been changed more by all of these outside things. For example, that is why, in my um, data analysis, one of the significant contributory factors for twenty twenty-two. The gap in instruction. Additionally, if we look at those percentages, it's also important to see, how does that lead, I think, for other districts?
Right. Okay, and I'm, I'm in agreement there. So then I still feel like I have a gap in, in that, in that comparative wave that you just referenced. But let's take COVID out of it, from twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen, we went from eighty-four point seven percent down to seventy-six point nine percent. Do we have an idea of why?
Um, I was not really keen to evaluate that. So I can't speak personally about the work that was done to figure in and understand those scores, um, particularly with the instructional. But I can talk about it twenty-two. And what are the things that we identified as, you know, where we focus.
So I'm gonna go back to the first thing that I said, when I said, I looked at this data, and at first I kinda had this like reaction. And then I started looking at the comparative districts, and not that I'm trying to tell their data story. I think that that helped me. And so I think that it would be really beneficial if we could take a look at that, not critical one way or the other, but it just, it, it allows for you to take a look at the, some of the trends where I looked at it and went, oh, wow, I don't have the why yet, why that happened. But when I looked at the other districts and I was like, we're very much the same, that looks like a mirror. I'm not sure, I don't have all the reasons as to why, but I could, that comparison of that bar graph for me was very helpful. Um, and I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be really helpful.
Not look at other districts too, and just see that shooting up the next three, five years, right?
Yeah.
And other districts calling Barb and Jen saying, how are you guys doing that? We've, we're staying at seventy-eight percent, you guys are at eighty-nine.
Yeah, yep, it's a both and. All right, I'm gonna jump ahead. Some of the celebrations, and this gets into that grade level information, we saw um, some increases in reading, particularly in grade three and seven. Grade three went from nearly sixty-five to more than seventy percent lower student reading condition. And grade level expectation, that grade reading went up more than eight percent points. In math, we saw some nice gains in grade six and seven math. And that I would, I guess I would acknowledge a piece of context about math, that um, the year before I arrived, we implemented new math resources. And so this would um, encourages me to think that our teachers have a better understanding of that curriculum resource. And are really um, doing their ability to align instruction to the standards, using that new resource. Um, while it wasn't a significant um, improvement, grades three through five in math consistently have high scores. And in third grade in particular, eighty-one point two of their percent of the students met proficiency in math. We also saw an increase in high school science, one to fifty-four point one percent of the reading proficiency. While at fifty-four point one, isn't like, woo, I'm watching that growth is good. While at fifty four point one, isn't like woo, I'm watching that growth is good. And as we look at trends across the state, those science boards are, are low. And so we're higher than what state average. Again, we're not where we want to be. And when you look at the context, we are not as in crisis as what that number might suggest.
Why do you say that?
Because I'm watching the trend. If we were at fifty four point one and then our comparable districts were at seventy four. I'd miss that. I want our scores to improve and I see that it's possible. We have work to do. And so we're, we're with the group. We are not a minority. So, uh, I think it's, again, one of those bold fans that we need to be better, but we are not a minority. Where we are underperforming as compared to our, our comparable. More so.
Number on there, it's giving me a stomach ache. Um, is the sixty eight percent of seventh grade reading not alarming? That's not crisis?
The increase in eight percentage points is significant.
Okay, yeah, that's a different point than I was trying to ask, but. Oh, okay.
Yeah. I really like the celebrations of, of the growth in some of these areas. The, um, the one that causes me some concern, and I know we're probably getting to the growth areas next. Um, when I look at the math and reading at the high school level. Um, those are the kids that we were, I was referencing earlier in middle school that dealt with COVID. And, and not to the fault of the math or literacy or English teachers at the high school. That's not my point. My point is that. That's that group and that tier one that, that went through COVID during middle school. That's a very trying time in a normal world. And then there, maybe those scores are reflective of some of those obstacles they faced during COVID.
One second to make, when we think about the reading, we have to remember that it's not testing reading, it's testing the English language arts standards. Which is reading, writing, and then there's a whole other third strand, which I don't completely understand where all that is, right? And so this is more than just reading, right?
And as we think about the gains here, within the each day, we're looking at statewide data.
Looking at individual schools, individual districts, and our gains are phenomenal. They are really impressive. When you look across the state at other schools and districts and how much they're gaining. There are some districts doing better than we are, but most of them are not in terms of that gain they're making post-COVID. And we have to remember, you can make gains. But are they truly gains? So we could teach to the test. Or you can teach and do the thing that's right for kids long term and learning. And from this data, we can't tell which. It is. And that's why this is an important piece up here at Satellite. But as we move down into map and street data, then we truly understand what our kids knowing can do. Because that will tell us more than this. Is that a fair statement, Jen? Okay.
And I just want to, if I could. I, I want to just clarify alarm, what, you know, um, I heard a couple people say, couples say, isn't sixty eight alarming? I don't want you to think that we don't think that that's okay or not alarming. I, I think the, I think Jen is trying to contextualize it and say. We know we are a district that should be doing better than the state. And we can, we will continue to grow. And at the same time, we also know that. We're, um, the, the whole point of putting it top five and top ten was really intended to help you understand, but. Give you that context of, we're, you know, we're not, we're not alone, I guess.
So, but if that's your question at now, I go to the place where I think to a teacher.
Yes, the only thing Lucy, and I was gonna, I, I trust the feedback that you're getting. Um, around our games and, and that's what you mentioned. But that's the context that I'm like craving right now. And if that's the case, I would love to scream that from the rooftop because everybody in the district would be so proud of that. So like whatever that is, let's publicize the heck out of it.
I just wrote down, how can we, can, sometimes we say, how do we convey to the community? We're not, we're not communicating very well sometimes when we talk about something. Yes, 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 and yes. That sixty eight percent reading could be explained how Lucy explained it. And how Lucy also explained. Yeah, anyway. Yes, that doesn't read well to the community.
I'm going to move on where we're going, where, what we have talked about as a district leadership team and as part of the ILP work. So we know that in the area of reading, that we need to start in our letters professional development journey for K two. This year, all of our teachers in grade three, four, and five have participated in letters professional development. Um, I'm going to add in there that our K two teachers who did their letters learning last year are working on implementation this year. Well, that implementation is not going to change our MCA score from that year, but grade two doesn't take those scores. The work that we're doing at Wildwood is most definitely wanting to support what we see coming out of OH two in the next several years. Um, I shared with you in an earlier slide, our new word work or word study resources. Um, that brings not only new ways to, um, orient instruction that provides consistency. How we're approaching that word study and morphology with our students across K five. Reading in the content areas has been, uh, an area of focus for middle school and this next year is even more of a focus. They have an intention to offer professional development during their P V days on how do we help kids read in science and in social studies? So that they're using those literacy skills off the board. And we've added that additional literacy classifying in middle school, which will give kids more time to focus on those English language arts standards. That are not simply reading, but are that comprehensive English language arts. Um, and one of the things as Barb talked about in her superintendent update, our mentor and induction program. One of the pieces of feedback that we heard is that we need to do a better job of really getting those new teachers started off on what are our instructional practices? And so this year, as we welcome new staff in, we were very intentional to allocate. We should make sure that teachers were thinking not about how do I make my room ready for kids? But how do I make my instruction ready for kids? And so they have access to, um, all of the, the tools and resources that we have. And they have a better level of readiness to support their kids when they come.
Just a comment, I really like how you just pointed out the Wildwood letters kids, that's going to really show up in OH.
On our longer term roadmap, do we have intentions of expanding letters out to grade six through it?
So here's what I would say, artists agree to act, there doesn't need to be a great year, I can't say that, but who needs to participate in science of reading instruction? And we have to look at what is, what is the first in terms of that, that's the fact. Part of that list also includes. How do we help our preschool teachers understand the science of reading and get that? The science of reading is so deep in what it intends. That it is not the hope to all. Learning about the history of morphology and word studies would not make it the reason. Having said that, we have found, um, other professional development courses that are much less. That we do, that we, that we. That we may be able to adapt for. Our intervention teachers at the middle school, we are required to make sure that they participate. As well as at the high school and all of our special education staff. So we're building capacity as far as the expectation of the reading app. And then we're going to look to who's next to have to that. So yes, that is part of our roadmap. And then tangentially, we have a team that is called our district. Letters implementation team as a representative of K twelve, pre-K twelve. So that we can consider how do we articulate that roadmap so we know that we're training everybody. All right. Math. Um, we have specifically at OH Anderson have seen a shift and will continue to focus on shift in instructional practices. That include, um, learning targets that focus on the academic standards. Um, and we're seeing that work both at the middle school and high school as well. When students have a better understanding of what the intention of the learning is, they can, um, have a clear way to connect with their learning to what that intention is. So that's what that learning target helps kids understand. Um, we have done more use of pre-assessment data at OH Anderson to inform that lesson design and do that small group practice teaching. As we look at the new, um, I'm going to go to the bottom one because it's, it's better related. The new math, um, curriculum or standards that are coming out from state. I've initiated a math curriculum review last year. I shared with you in my one pager that has that, um, sort of a circle on what the curriculum review cycle looks like. Is that I begin with professional development, so the math teachers are digging into what are the best practices in teaching math? Before we look at what new resources we might need. We're waiting for the state to say, all right, the standards are ready. Once those come out, then we'll really dig in after the one. What do these standards expect students to demonstrate? And then we can look for those things in our instruction. Finally, the opt outs, which we've talked about in the past. We have some additional investigation that we need to do with the best opt out. We know that, um, at the secondary level in particular, we see more students who don't see the value of those MCA. Because they have eighteen thousand schools, the FCL things that are happening. And all of those, if you were to boil it down, really have a financial impact. They're going to potentially earn college credit, or it can help support college. MCA's don't have that financial benefit to that. So we have to balance, how do we market and support, um, is to take the MCA seriously at the secondary level? And, um, really thinking about how can we do a better job of communicating with families? What is the value of an MCA and how can they support us and helping the secondary child? And then you take that, that, uh, assessment.
What are we doing for our opt outs? If a student opts out, they count as not met.
It depends on the course you look at.
Okay, but so when we look at our data too, it could be number of opt outs could be pulling us down as well because of. I forget what year it was. Remember the year where the high school in Minneapolis, like? Three quarters of the school opted out and then the state changed the way they did the opt outs. So then it meant not met, but all that opt out. Was hitting the press and so families start to opt out. And so.
I'll just jump in because it's fine. Um, so this, the data that you're looking at. Um, is not affected by, it's not, we're not, um, subtracting this. Or the students who opted out are not being counted as not proficient in the data we're sharing with you. For accountability, we do have, anyone who opted out is counted as non, not proficient. So for the state to look at whether or not, um, you know, they, we need intervention, it's based on, based on that. But that is not the data we're sharing with you.
They, what we're, what we're looking at in that. Who are the kids who are not represented in our data? What level of math? And sort of making our best guess, that's how we assess in search of, yes, we can. But I think we can provide.
Well, and this statement is a little bit contradictory because obviously the data is so important in many ways, but then it's also. So difficult because when you think about how many times our kids are assessed. For an MCA, for an AP class, for a college in the schools, for just their formative and summative assessments in the classroom. I mean, I remember as the number of years I spent in the classroom, how frustrating it was. The number of days, if you were to count up in a school year, that our kids are being assessed. Thinking about the activities they could have engaged in, the learning opportunities, it's tough because we assess so much. It's almost like. Test fatigue and kids are like, how do you get excited for another test? And so that part is hard because the data, yes, it's important. It's also really difficult because. There's, there's like a limit that a student can just reach and take with testing and you just say, why should I care about another one?
And those are all things that we need to support. I've answered for tonight, but that concept.
Just a general comment as I learned more about this and most of the folks up here probably already knew this, but I didn't realize that the MCA is. Um, obviously I do, there are different components to it, but I didn't realize that come secondary. That you're only taking the reading assessment once and the math assessment once. And so as we use trends to hopefully. Guide us as a district on where we need to make investments and make improvements. Like i- in my opinion, it almost makes sense to disregard. The secondary MCA's. So we can remove that, that stigma that. You know, kids are opting out and not taking the exam. Like I, I feel like we can get really good trend data from that three through eight. You know, group where they're all taking the MCA. And not worry about, I'm, I, that's not true. I shouldn't say not worry about, but hopefully you guys can see where I'm going with this. Like. We should be able to get really significant trends of where we need to make investments based on what's happening in grades three through it.
So what are the kinds of questions? And I. If I change this, then what is it? And that's important and. More important is what are we going to do about? That, that's what we make a change. So to balance that, how, how long do you take to analyze before we shift to meet our plan? You know, who's doing what, by when?
Know what percentage of our kids take the ACT? As junior, as junior.
We have all of our students take the ACT. Um, I don't know, like, I couldn't tell you the absences and, and whether it's their first time or their second time. I will tell you recently though, that, um, fewer kids are taking it multiple times. And there are some that are not taking it at all, even those who are going to a four year, four year school because tests are. So even that has shifted a little bit in terms of importance and. ACT.
So that, and that is another incentive. And even like you said, that. As the story has been, he just, he takes. With some student in the morning.
There was a movement to try and get the ACT to replace the MCA. Um, and then it wasn't, it didn't align with standards and so it was rejected by the, the federal government. But that was the intent at one point to try and get that, that to be the, the high school exam.
And then in final. Do you have a wonder, here's a score and. Score, does the time that we allocated to construction. Impact our. Don't know that we can find out absolutely or definitely not, but wonders that we have and something. That scope and sequence of order of how we see what. Is in change from. Do you know that the implementation of new sources can be extremely fine and eight? Six and seven happen over. Those are all the things that we are seeing who were.
I hope your wonder and explore that. I, if you want some feedback, there's a teacher at O H who wishes it wasn't every six weeks. They had to flip flop with social studies, they want science every day.
I have a question, but maybe more of a comment for the board and superintendent Dufferin. They did a very good job staying professional. Um. If we don't wanna put a. If we want to have value placed in other measurement criteria in addition to M C A data. Can we start to brainstorm what those measurement points are gonna be and discuss the merits of them, please?
Great.
Uh huh.
As a high level overview. When you think about teaching. We have. Um, we used it so learning for. So. Sixty minutes. For us. In order to help them reimagine what we. Innovation that starts from the beginning. And then they're both done. Um. This is. You. Please, um, think of it for itself. You know. And then others. I think that's a year. And I think. People. That's. And then as a reminder, um. Isn't it? Have you? Um. All those systems that. In order to make it. Next step. My intention is to get you to be. I would. Sometime before this will work. And then. Final slide, questions you have for me?
So I'm having an internal struggle right now. That I wanna double down on Ryan's ask on what other ways are we measuring and assessing students? Because I think about, now certainly the M C A's are important. We talked about the three different satellite level, map level, so on. Um, as an employer is looking for one of, to employ one of our students as they graduate. Not one of them's asking them, what was your score on the M C A test? And they're wanting to make sure that they're good communicators, they can work in a team, all of those things. And so. I just wanna double down on again, the, the, yes, I'm so happy to know this. I love to hear our great things that we're doing and also the growth areas. I think it's also really important to talk about the growth areas. But I wanna really focus on what's next because we truly aren't. An innovative school district if we're not thinking about getting our kids ready for the workforce that they're gonna work in.
Thank you, great presentation.
Thanks, Jen. That was something.
Can you imagine if you had those extra slides? We didn't take out those extra slides. You were gonna give, you were gonna get a lot of information.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, we still have school board meeting schedule to look at. Somebody have that in front of them? Is that next? Uh, does everyone have the schedule in front of them? I'm just getting up. I mean, it's not coming up, here it is. Um, does anyone have questions?
Do you want, do you wanna just kind of highlight a few things that are happening in here? So um, for this is the school board meeting, proposed school board meeting for twenty twenty four. Uh, meeting schedule, sorry. You'll notice that um, there is not a meeting on the final, on the last day of school. But in order to do that, look at May, we have May ninth study session, May twenty third regular meeting. And then the week after that, another study session. And that is so that you won't have a study session on the last day of school in June, which was something that. You asked for.
So then there's only one meeting in June and there's always only one meeting in July, so that's consistent, so.
So I, so I think that took care of that for you.
I have two things, I'd like us to consider where we do professional development. Um, summer's really hard for all of us and so if we could look to two other times a year where it fits better not do all day like we did historically. But maybe do some shorter ones like we just did. So we have that time for training and board development, because I think that's important. And be nice to get those on sooner than later, because the longer you wait, it's hard. And I'd like to propose that we change the meeting date of January fourth. Um, that is our organizational meeting and with this coming out, this. At this point in time, I'm already traveling January fourth through ninth and will not be at that meeting if that stays in that spot. So I would encourage us to look maybe at the third. Um, so we can do it early or after the ninth, but then we run into the M S B A conference. So those are the two things I would like to see changed on.
Okay, look at that, make sure everyone's around.
Great, and so then we'll also propose a couple of dates for um board retreat. Right, so, yeah, yeah, so if we got those on the, on the calendar early.
Yeah. And what would.
Question slash comment, um, as we look out to twenty twenty five, I'm really sad to be saying that. But um, couldn't we have a discussion about potentially moving? Meeting day, days of the week, Thursday to a Monday or Tuesday?
We can have that discussion right now.
Well, it's late, I don't wanna.
We just smirked because we've had it a lot of times.
But it's, it's a new board, but it is. It is a new board.
I would just say that Thursdays have been really hard and what, I think with kids and getting older Thursdays, there's a lot of events Thursday nights usually. And so I found even my short tenure here, I'm missing a lot of activities.
Um, I'm happy to. See if people wanna do it, starting in this next calendar year on Mondays. Do I, should I do a survey or do you wanna talk about it now?
We're late, I don't think anybody wants to talk about anything right now, but um, I just wanted to make the comment that if.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's totally up for discussion, it's completely, I mean, so. Should we just do a survey? Okay.
Great, thank you.
So, so we'll vote on this, is it, is it the next meeting or? Um. No, we have a study session. So well, we can bring this back at the study session and then kind of get on board and then we'll vote on it the next meeting.
Not a big deal, but if it worked out for everybody, that'd be great. Cool.
Any other input on this calendar? Okay. Okay, and now for uh action items. Approval of donations, grants totaling for July twenty twenty three, one thousand six hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? By Director Domon, second, seconded by Director Peterson. Discussion, all donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Most motion carries. And now, school board reports. Not done these in a while, so, but we'll try to be quick. Uh, Director Payne, A M S D.
They're partnered with A M S D, looking at some policy lovers that you might look for organizations statewide.
Survey out, using the survey data, we're really looking at the future of education and the policy implications. So this will help A M S D get ready for the, set the legislative platform and the A M S D conference, which is coming in November. Really, we're exploring three areas, teacher issues, meaning teacher training, teacher license and teacher professional development. Culture of innovation, the barriers and supports to our schools and districts in that space. Calendars, instructional hour, et cetera, where we've worked a lot. Um, and then assessments, going to what Ryan said earlier, that our state system assessment is not ideal. Um, and how can we use policy to try and fix that and make that better? So they are still doing research, um, there'll be some other work, a student group will be pulled together in that space too. So hopefully our student board rep will be able to attend that. And then our next meeting for A M S D is September eighth.
Uh, next, uh, Director Regan, the M A F report.
I'm, I'm going to.
Okay.
Get that report and um, just briefly, it was an opportunity for me to share. The district's strategic plan with the M A F board and have them engage a little bit in that. And try to start finding themselves in the plan and what things they might want to support. So um, we spent some time doing that. They also um, talked about uh some approvals for various grant requests. And they will be attending the teacher of the, they will be attending our kickoff. Um, so that they can present the teacher of the year grant as um, as always and um. And also they are getting ready to kick off the fall fund drive. So they'll be making a round to explain um, the fall fund drive and how money is used to, to support. How donations are, are used to support stu, uh, teacher and teacher grants. Um, I will say, uh, they had a great year too, last year in terms of um, money raised. And being able to support our teachers and students with grants.
Can I give one quick comment? I'm lucky or unlucky enough to have a close relationship with a M A F board member. And and the feedback that I have, have received is that M A F was overwhelmingly um supportive and impressed with the strategic plan that was presented. So it was nice to get some really positive feedback from them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, M S B A, uh, Lucy already shared the upcoming advocacy dates tour. Um, I also wanted to point out that um, they did send out an email on the delegate. Um, new, new two-year terms to be a um, delegate is, has started or no, to be a, a board member. Is, I think, the term they use. Anyway, if you're interested in being on the M S B A board, you can submit, it's a two-year term, you could submit um, that um. Request, it's the, it is a delegate. Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, I'm trying to read my notes and then, let's see, oh, and then they have put together a webpage for. Um, updates on the legislative session because there was so much that happened. So I went to that webpage, I thought it was helpful, you do need your password. So if you need help, I think Leslie can help you or you can just contact them. Um, and I think that the only other thing I was going to say is they've had a number of webinars and they do record them. So if you missed them, you can go back and watch them. And next is, that to Director Payne for nine sixteen.
Was the C T E tour, the student-built house. Uh, there was a special tour for nine sixteen board members, so I went to that, so I didn't see any of you who made it to the house tour. But it's really quite impressive and the house they will build next year will be on the line right next door. So if you found it this year, you'll, you'll be able to find it next year. Um, but, and the house, when it did go on the market, um, had many offers very, very quickly, but they had to pull it off the market because the way they split the lot. And so I have not followed to see if they've sold that house yet, but it is highly desirable. Um, at the price point and the quality of craftsmanship um, in that house. Completely student-built house, um, partnered with some other programs at Century and St. Paul College. And we had at least one of our students involved in that.
Three.
Three, yeah, we had three this year involved in the building of that house. So if you didn't get an opportunity to go see that, try and do that next summer, um, because it's really impressive.
Lucy, I think there was, was there an article in the Wiper Press about it, I thought I'd read about it in there.
Yeah, yeah, they built one every year or so. Um. And actually, this year's house was the exact same floor plan as last year's house. Um, and so it's interesting to talk to the, the teachers in that program of things they wanna do differently next year and then things like that. So it was a lot of fun. As a board, we had a strategic planning um, activity with Teamworks, which was good to, I guess, all more embedded in the strategic plan work of the district. During the board meeting, we um, did a summary of our superintendent evaluation nine sixteen. Um, Dr. Um, Bo was doing an excellent job, she had very high review. We had a legislative update from the legislative liaison, um. Valerie Dozlin, sorry, almost lost her name, we approved Q comp uh piece. We worked on strategic actions, impact report from the superintendent. We had some policy approvals that we did, um, they updated their org chart, which is very helpful if you wanna see that. Um, for the first time, nine sixteen will have an e-learning plan, so we approved the e-learning plan for the district. Um, they are adjusting their subpay rates, um, because Gideon says it's becoming so competitive. Um, so they did have a change there. Uh, approved a partnership with Canvas Health, similar to our North Homes partnership, which is why it's nice to see other districts doing that same type of work. Approved a contract with Playworks and I've talked to Barbara about Playworks now might be beneficial for O H Anderson. It's a recess playground, social skills um, program. And then they are just did really big contract, new push-to-talk radios um, system, which is really interesting. We haven't talked to him about that, or it might be something else to follow up on. Full board meeting and we meet again on September sixth.
Any other board reports?
Oh, yeah. So, um, I mean, really the focus was around science of reading and um. Is it Dr. Kim Gibbons, that's what I thought, I thought that's what her name was. Um, did a fantastic uh job talking about really a lot of the things that we had already heard about. Um, but really others from around the state and then there were breakout sessions. Um, some good networking to be able to see people in person again and, and be at events like that. Um. Yeah, I don't know, I just, I, I find it always really. Great to hear what's happening, even if it's at lunch, like when I sat at a table at lunch to hear what's happening in other districts. And um, so the networking piece along with the content about uh, science of reading was great, so, anything else you wanna add?
Session put on by the M D S assessment folks and it was interesting, after listening to Dr. Reichel give a really good presentation on assessment. I was sitting with some other board members, one board member who has been a board member for eight years. And she says, I finally get it. After eight years of listening to assessment presentation, she's finally starting to understand because of the complexity within our system. And the M C A's at this presentation, it finally all clicked for her. So for our new board members, if it's still really super overwhelming, I hope it doesn't take eight years. Because I think Dr. Reichel's doing an excellent job helping us. I'll understand the data that we have access to and, and the graphics and, and the graphs are helping immensely, but it is a steep learning curve.
Other board reports. All right, thank you. Uh, we now will be going into closed session. So I'll just, before we vote on this, I'll just let everyone know when we come back. So you don't need to stick around. Can I get a motion for closed session? By Director Domon, second. Oh, thank you. Yeah. This is, um, go, this is for discussion of labor negotiation strategies um, pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D point oh three regarding the superintendent contract. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.